To sit down and basically compensate them would be to acknowledge the impact of all those forms of institutional racism that presided over this disaster and the suppression of it. And that is, of course, as we know now, not how it worked out.
It seems, Brent, that what has been achieved here could be seen as quite modest, right? After all this effort, the people of Tulsa and increasingly the rest of the country are finally calling this what it is and what it always was. But that, to me, raises a question. After an episode like this of forced forgetting, is recovering the memory enough?
First of all, I'd say uncovering truth is in itself a noble and beneficial thing for all of humanity. I think a better and more noble outcome and the moral outcome would have been for city and state officials to recognize their culpability in a financial way. But what we have here, we have a slow process of acknowledgement. We have great swaths of important and bloody history suppressed because the contemporary society is ashamed of them. And you excavate history, keep bringing it forward. And in the end, I think the beneficial results are seen more by posterity than by people living right now.
Brent, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael.
Brent Staples is a member of the New York Times Editorial Board.
Greenwood represented all the best of what was possible for black people in America and for all the people. When my family was forced to leave Tulsa, I lost my chance of an education. I never finished school past the fourth grade. I have never made much money. To this day, I can barely afford my everyday needs. I am 107-year-old and have never been seen justice. I pray that one day I will.
The Daily is supported by Fidelity Wealth Management, helping clients develop tax-efficient investing strategies. Investment minimums apply. Fidelity Brokerage Services, LLC. And by American Public Media. Innovative, immersive, and skillfully investigated, The Daily with Michael Barbaro brings listeners today's stories as only the New York Times can report them.
I'm going to go ahead and call the Tuesday, June 1st, 2021 public hearing to order. The first item is approval of agenda, and I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is approval of minutes. And the minutes of April 20th, I believe, all were present. So we can go ahead and vote on that. The minutes for May the 18th, 2021, Troy was not here, and we don't have enough people here this evening to have a quorum. So we will vote only on April 20, 21 minutes. So do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item is consent agenda. Phillip, are you going to take that?
So you all, the planning commission and staff, have been working on a series of amendments. And so we put them all together in your packet. And so what we have for July 6th is proposed amendments to the Roanoke County zoning ordinance. And we have amendments to all five articles of the zoning ordinance. So in Article 1, we are amending Section 30-14, amendments to the ordinance to be consistent with the special use permit process that we amended in 2019, I believe. In Article 2, we are adding definitions for processing or manufacturing and slaughterhouse, amending the definition for industry type 1, and deleting the definition for meatpacking and related industries. In Article 3, we are proposing to amend the maximum height limitation for principal structures in the R3 medium-density multifamily residential district, adding agritourism as a permitted use in the I1 low-intensity industrial district, adding agritourism and slaughterhouse as permitted uses, and deleting meatpacking and related industries as a permitted use in the I2 high-intensity industrial district. Again, all that in Article 3. In Article 4, which is our use of design standards, we are amending the use of design standards for agritourism, for home occupations type 1 and type 2, and for multifamily dwelling. In Article 5, we are amending several sections in the off-street parking, stacking, and loading section, including the location of parking, computing required spaces, minimum parking required, shared parking, and stacking spaces in drive-through facilities. We're also amending 30-96-6C that deals with landscaping and parking areas. Again, that deals with site distance in parking lots, dealing with landscaping. And then amending two sections of the sign ordinance or regulations, one dealing with the calculation of allowable sign area on corner lots, and the special signage districts and regulations for shopping centers. So we have that packet of information in your, as you received as part of this meeting. I'll say there's just one small error that we would replace. On page 7, in the home occupations, we refer to 500 feet when it should refer to 500 square feet. So we would make that one change to include that. And that's what we will make an amendment that goes online for your public hearing in July. So other than that, that's only a tweak to the packet or the information that you have in your packet.
You said that was on page 7.
Page 7, it's under, at the top where it has D, additional standards for all types of type 2 home occupation, it says the maximum floor, and number 1, the maximum floor area permitted for home occupation shall be 25% of the finished floor area of the dwelling unit, or 500 feet, I should say, or 500 square feet, whichever is greater. So with that.
Any questions for Phillip on this? Troy, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Then Phillip, we need a motion, don't we? Okay, so I'll need a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll file a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Next, we will have the invocation.
It is a longstanding tradition of Roanoke County Planning Commission to offer a prayer or hold a moment of silence prior to conducting public hearings. The goal of this practice is to set the minds of all who are present to a higher purpose and to invite all to reflect upon shared ideals and common ends. We invite county citizens of all faiths who desire to lead such a prayer or moment of silence to please contact the administrative assistant at least two weeks in advance. When no citizen has arranged to lead the invocation, a member of the planning commission in his or her individual capacity will do so. All who are present may choose whether to stand or otherwise participate. Any invocation that may be offered before the official start of the commission hearing shall be a voluntary offering to a private citizen. The views or beliefs expressed by the invocation speaker have not been previously reviewed or approved by the commission and do not necessarily represent the religious beliefs or views of the commission in part or as whole, or as a whole. No member of the community is required to attend or participate in the invocation, and such decision will have no impact on their right to actively participate in the business of the commission. So with that, we'll have a prayer. Our most gracious Father, we come before you as now in the name of your grace. We thank you for the opportunity to live in a place in a valley like the Roanoke Valley. We just ask that you help us make decisions that will be good for the Roanoke Valley, not only for the citizens now but for future generations. And now we just ask that you watch over, care for, and protect us through this meeting and help us to make the right decisions, in Christ's name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We have a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Now we come to the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have a petition before us of Secure Store LLC to remove proffer conditions on approximately 10.064 acres, zone C2C, high-intensity commercial district with conditions, and to obtain a special use permit for a mini warehouse located adjacent to and south of 925 North Electric Road, Catawba Magisterial District. Now, first of all, I would like to say if you wish to speak this evening before the commission, please fill out a form that was found in the hallway and turn it into the county staff. So with that, we will go ahead with staff presentation concerning this public hearing.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. I'll be discussing the Secure Store LLC's petition to request to remove proffers and acquire a special use permit for 10.064 acres in the Catawba District. Start out, I've got a vicinity map here will give you an idea of where the site location is. It's directly south of 81 and 311 on the border of Salem and Roanoke County on 419. And this is an aerial view of the site location. Here you can see that Pinkerton Chevrolet is just to the north of the property. DEQ's Blue Ridge Regional Office is to the west, just over the line in Salem. And then below that, you've got some residential properties to the south of the property, to the site. On the Roanoke side is Lakeside Baptist Church, and then you've got residential properties facing it on the east. Okay, so this property is located just south of 925 North Electric Road. That's actually the Pinkerton Chevrolet site. It's 10.065 acres consisting of three parcels, and it's located in the Catawba Magisterial District. The current zoning on the property is C2C, high-intensity commercial with conditions, and their proposed zoning is C2CS, high-intensity commercial, to remove some of the current proffers and to gain a special use permit for the property to put in a mini warehouse facility. Okay, so now we're getting into some of the site pictures. As you can see, the arrows, that's about where we were when we were taking these photos, and then the direction of the area, or of the arrow, is the direction that we were taking the photo. So this is from the Pinkerton Chevrolet property, looking down the power line easement. And then this is on the cul-de-sac at Embassy Drive. This is looking at the southernmost parcel. This parcel is mainly going to be used for stormwater. And then this is a paper street that's just off of Embassy Drive, looking again down the power line right away from the opposite direction. And this is from the actual site. This is the middle portion of the site, looking at the mainly undeveloped portion in the residential area. I believe that's a zone in R3 parcel, and this is looking directly at that. Now, this is on the northernmost parcel, looking at the residential structure that this has the most potential to affect. This is directly under the power line right of ways, looking at the back of their house. You can see the shed and another outbuilding there. And then this is just a little bit past that parcel, looking again down the power line right of ways. You get a good idea of the topography of the back of these parcels. It kind of goes into some rolling hills. And out in the distance there, you can see the clearing where Pinkerton Chevrolet's property is. And then this is another photo from the neighborhood. This is on Deputy Drive, looking at a house that has some more potential for view shed impacts, but much less than the previous house pictured. And this is another photo from Deputy, or Legate Drive, sorry. This is a little further up, looking down onto the property. And I actually mistaken, I apologize. This earlier photo on Deputy Drive is actually of the front of the house that will have the highest view shed. This is from Legate Drive, which is a home that will have less of a view shed issue. And then this is from Locke Street in Salem, looking just over 419. This is where the proposed entrance is. And here you can see the guardrail that would have to be removed if they use this entrance. Okay, now background on the proposed site. So this site's currently undeveloped. The site topography, it's relatively flat on the eastern portion of the northern site. It sort of comes into some rolling hills under that power line right of way. But for the most part, the land lays relatively flat on this property. There is a little dip in between the northernmost and middle property, where it gets into some sort of swampy areas. It's a little bit wet down there, but not the actual build site. Site history, in 1984, the northern parcel was rezoned from R1 to B2C for a new car dealership. In 1998, the middle parcel was rezoned from C1 to C2C for the development of the Ark Medical Center. And then in 2002, the middle and southern parcels were rezoned to C2C for the development of the Country Inn and Suites. And as you can see, none of these developments actually came to fruition. So these are the existing proffers in place. And what I'm going to do, unless you all would rather me read through all these, is just go through the ones that they're looking to remove. So in ordinance 082702-11, they are looking to remove proffer 1 and 5 and 8. And those read, "The site plan shall generally conform to the master site development plan for the Country Inn and Suites and Family Restaurant Plan presented on August 6, 2002." And 5, "All parking lot lighting shall be downlit and consist of high-pressure sodium lighting. The poles include fixtures for the parking lot. Lighting shall not exceed 25 feet above grade." Part 8, "Screening and buffering in that area around where camper and recreational vehicle parking occurs shall be type C, option 2, 30-foot buffer, one large tree every 30 feet, six feet screening, and six shrubs for every 10 feet." And then ordinance 1283-46, Part 1, they'd like to have removed the one and only proffer in this ordinance, that the real property, which is the subject of rezoning requests, be used only as a new car dealership. And our staff recommended conditions are, "The site shall be developed in general conformance with the concept plan titled 'Concept Plan, Prepared by Engineering Concepts, Incorporated,' dated May 26, 2021, subject to any changes required during the site plan review process. And landscaping on-site shall be installed in general conformance to the concept plan titled 'Concept Plan, Prepared by Engineering Concepts, Incorporated,' dated May 26, 2021, subject to any changes required during the site plan review process. Lighting on-site shall be limited to light fixtures on the proposed buildings. There shall be no freestanding light poles on-site. Freestanding signage shall be limited to one freestanding sign approximately 12 feet in height and 10 feet in width, and shall be in conformance with the concept drawing provided by Blink Sign dated April 13, 2021." And these are their concept plans. As you can see here, they've got two larger structures and then two narrower, smaller structures in front of those for their storage. And the concept plan also includes a small office and some parking spaces. And this is a rendering of what they would like to have there. And then this is their actual storage facility layout, and then their sign proposal. And this shows a little bit more in-depth of their layout for their storage. There you can see the smaller structures above and then the larger structure below. The two larger storage buildings will be 32,300 square feet. The two smaller buildings will be 2,200 square feet, for a total of 69,000 square feet of storage with approximately 500 rental units. The mini warehouse structure will also include a small office with six parking spaces. And here is the current land use map. You can see you've got C2C properties, mostly surrounded by R1 with that R3 property as well. And then on the Salem side, you had mostly commercial properties with a small portion to the south that was residential properties. Here's the future land use map, and you can see that it's, future land use for this property is Core and surrounded by R3, or sorry, residential. Core, Core is a future land use area where high-intensity urban development is encouraged. Core areas may also be appropriate for larger-scale, highway-oriented retail uses and regionally-based shopping facilities. A mini warehouse is an appropriate use for the Core land use designation. These are some of our agency comments. For the most part, they were fairly generic, just sort of stating certain requirements that each department would have. We did have one that was not in support of this from our Economic Development Department. It reads, "While the proposed use of the property by Secure Store is consistent with the comprehensive plan and provides a service to the Catawba area, it does not enhance the economic interests of the county consistent with the existing proffer conditions for a new car dealership. Economic development does not support the rezoning due to the limited availability of commercial sites with high visibility and access, as well as the high-value growth potential of this corridor." So this comment was specifically for that property that did have that remaining proffer for the new car dealership. The other ones did not have that existing proffer in place. We also received comment from Building Safety, Fire and Rescue, Solid Waste, Stormwater, and VDOT. VDOT was also one that had a little bit more of an implication on this development. So that corridor is actually shown here as a limited access corridor. So they would actually have to apply to get a break in that limited access in order to get access off of 419. And if there's any more questions or anything, we've got Brian from VDOT here that can elaborate a little further on that if you need any more questions answered. Okay, so staff conclusions, the proposed rezoning and special use permit is in conformance with the goals and objectives of the high-intensity commercial zoning designation, and staff suggests four conditions dealing with the conformance to the concept plan, including landscaping and limits on lighting and signage, which I read earlier. So we are in support of this development. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. I would like to go back to economic development and a little, I wish someone from Economic Development were here tonight to explain their position. So it appears that what they're saying is not consistent with the existing proffer conditions for a new car dealership. Has anyone been interested in as far as a new car dealership? Does anyone here on staff know? This property, it looks like it's been sitting for a long, long time, and we have someone here that's willing to develop it. And so I was just wondering, I guess, since they aren't here, we'll just have to leave it at that. So I was just wondering why they would have said that. And I think it is worth pointing out, and I'm glad you pointed out, that Fire and Rescue said they do not object to this project, and it would not adversely affect the services we provide. Solid Waste says the establishment will be eligible for trash collection within our volume limitations. Stormwater and Engineer will need to make provisions for the runoff to an adequate channel. Maybe we'll hear more about Stormwater later this evening. But I did have a question about lighting. I know the county has a lighting. I was just wondering, what was the reason? I think what our lighting ordinance says is you can have poles up to, is it 16 or 18 feet tall, ma'am?
We don't have a requirement on height.
We don't?
No. We do have a standard at a half a candle at the property line for commercial property.
Okay.
In our conversations with the applicant, they indicated that all the lighting would be on the building. So we just put that in as part of what they propose on developing anyway.
Okay.
Again, what I'd say about economic development's comments, or going back, is, do you understand that the proffer... understand that the proffer that she's referring to dates back to 1984. So that's almost, what, 37 years?
Mm-hmm.
So somebody wanted to develop it as a new car dealership, it's, it's had some time. It's kind of similar to the Fralen property, of it being industrial and trying to develop it as industrial. It never was developed as industrial. So, so yeah, we do have a half candle limit on commercial development, but that was just tying to what they were proposing to do on-site anyway. And with the residential development behind it, we just want to make sure, you know, sometimes we try to put extra precautions in place to mitigate any impact to those residents because those residents are going to sit below the site.
So what you're saying then is, is the lighting, and I'll get more into it perhaps with the applicant, but the lighting, what we're asking them to do here would actually be less light than what was proffered in the past, is that correct?
Hmm.
Make less impact on the neighborhood, I guess?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, I have no further questions. Troy, or do you have any?
I have one, Wayne. I wanted to ask staff if they had cross-referenced. In 2017, I believe, the High Tech Road and Plantation Storage Building had a special use permit that I remember sitting through before joining the commission. And it seemed like a, a good bit of items were required of that applicant that went on to the board. Do we have all the same prerequisites here so that we are, I guess, kind of the same in line with what we made that applicant do for storage units?
Did you pull that up? Did you have that?
I didn't.
Yeah, so I think you're talking about the one on Plantation Road, Troy?
Yeah, Plantation and High Tech. There were, we kind of set a precedent there. Are we following through with that here in terms of what staff's conclusions were?
Somewhat. I mean, we had, we had renderings, we had more detailed renderings on that than we do here. So you could, again, if you want to have a condition on the rendering, that'll be developed in accordance with the rendering submitted. I do know we did have that, we did have a signage one, we did have a landscaping one. So I do think we are being consistent with similar conditions as well. And so, other than the building design, which, you know, if you want to add that as a condition, we could do so, that'll be done in general conformance with the rendering provided in the packet. A lot of times, if they don't have dates or markings, it's kind of hard to do that, but we can work something on that. But I think that's, those were the only things that we did with Plantation. Again, conformance with the site plan, which we're doing here as well. So other than the rendering, I think they're all probably similar to what we did on Plantation Road.
At the time, weren't there some concerns about setback from Plantation, which we don't have those concerns here?
Yeah, somewhat. To try to get, we also had, if you remember, the one on Plantation had the greenway or the shared-use path in front of it as well.
Right.
And so we were trying to set it back far enough, but they were also trying to push it forward for the storage of the outdoor vehicles, you know, storage of the RVs and recreational vehicles in the back. This, I don't know, they may do that here, but obviously it'd be to a lesser degree than what was on Plantation Road. So.
Okay, does that answer your question, Troy?
Uh, for now.
Okay. Kelly, you have any questions?
Phillip, I believe you just answered my question. My question was about the plan designs and having units on the back facing the neighborhoods and any lighting that could affect, you know, having lighting shooting right into the back of their homes, but I think that could be mitigated by buffering.
Yeah.
It sounds to me like that's what you were saying.
Yeah, and what we, if you look at the concept plan and our discussions with them during our pre-application meeting, you know, so you do have an easement by AEP that's there, right? And so typically what you do is you would probably plant along the property line, but the easement's along the property line. And so AEP's probably not going to allow anything to be built there. The other issue that you have is because the homes are at a lower elevation than the building, putting the buffer closer to the building actually will, will do a better job of hiding the building, right? So when you're looking up, you're not looking up over the, over something and then seeing the building further away. So that's what they've done. That's why we referenced their plan as far as the buffering goes, the landscaping goes. But typically, that's usually along the property line, but in this case, you have a AEP easement which kind of restricts that. So we'd rather have it where it is than have no buffer at all.
Okay, any other questions for staff at this time? If not, thank you. So we will move on to applicant presentation at this time? Please state your name and address for the record.
Josh Duncan, 116 Heritage Circle, Caldwell, West Virginia, 24925.
Thank you.
I'm Bobby Wampler of Engineering Concepts, 719 Richcrest Lane, Roanoke, Virginia.
Thank you.
Josh, I'll let you introduce it.
Again, my name is Josh Duncan. I appreciate everyone's time and consideration of our project. Let me give you a little bit of background about me and our company. For about the past decade, we have developed and managed self-storage and grown our management company to the point where we're actually managing facilities for other companies now, as well as our own. We have a corporate office near White Sulfur Springs, West Virginia, where we have an accountant, and we have an operations guy, an IT guy, and a marketing director as well. So our little company has grown, and we're very proud of the ones that we do have. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with our secure store over in Daleville, Virginia, but we do have one over there in Bodatot County. We were successful in rezoning that property from agriculture to something acceptable for self-storage. Appreciate Bobby's help with that. And we're just here, we wanted to present something nice to the community, something that will be from a landscaping and maintenance perspective, be very well-kept. I did want to clarify on the lighting really quick that I think it does make a ton of sense, as we mentioned, to plant the trees not at the property line, but to plant the screening trees up next to the building so any of the neighbors looking up, the trees are actually going to screen the building rather than looking over them. To second that, there's actually no lighting on the residential side of the building. All the lighting is going to be, be mounted to the building, downlighting, and actually contained between the buildings. We can get into that further when Bobby shows, if we have a map to look at where we can explain that. There's actually not even any lighting towards the residents. We understand from their perspective, they don't want to, they want to see something green and not something lit up and not pretty. So I think that should make, you know, a best-case scenario. Very light traffic, very non-intrusive from a traffic standpoint, but we appreciate your consideration of our project.
Thank you. Troy, I wanted to touch base and make sure that you can hear.
I can hear.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thanks for having us again. I'll just touch on a few things that I think might be pertinent to the, the concept plan. I think it's important that the project obviously is in compliance with the zoning, with the comprehensive plan. Really, we're looking for the special exception. The removal of proffers that we've proposed is strictly because the previous proffers tied them to specific plans. And if you've looked at those previous plans, we're very pleased because this is very rare that we can come in and say that our impact is going to be much less than what's currently allowable and proposed. So from those previous ones, I would just like to point out that from an impact to the community, the previous concept plan showed two entrances onto 419. We're only showing one entrance. We understand from our discussions with Brian Belavins and with what's in the report that this is a limited access designation, so we've got a little bit of a challenge there that we've got to get through with that being limited access, the fact that this is a very low-traffic generator. We hope that will be looked at favorably from, from getting an entrance onto 419. The peak daily traffic from this is about seven times less than what would be generated from the currently-approved hotel and restaurant. So significantly less traffic from an overall volume, as well as a peak-traffic standpoint. From a building height perspective, again, we were talking about a previously-approved hotel, 45 feet tall. Josh, how tall are these buildings?
We're under 20.
Yeah, under 20 feet, so that's going to certainly help from the screening visibility from the adjacent residential neighborhoods. Also, from an impact from 419, as we go closer to the north end of the property, the building roofline will almost be level with 419 at the north end, just because of geographic changes. So from a visual impact for the county's corridor, limited impact to that. We've already talked about the fixture heights being mounted to the building, so as you think about the four buildings, pretty much all the activity will be held within that courtyard between the buildings from a lighting perspective, from a visibility perspective. The buffer width, again, the project's been rezoned three times previously, so I'm sure that in those previous hearings that the neighbors were present and voiced their concerns, a number of the proffers had to do with the screening, keeping existing vegetation, focusing on enhanced buffers as the projects got close to residences. So we keep those intact. We trust that all the work that was put into place to make those palatable to the residents, while I'm sure they would prefer there'd be nothing there, we feel like that the buffers that were put in place with those proffers do a good job of helping to screen the project. And then stormwater management is always another large concern. And as you look at the three different parcels that we have proposed, significant water, basically sheet flows down to those neighborhoods, along with any runoff that would come from 419. With our plan, basically the northern two parcels where the buildings will be, all the runoff will be sent to the center, again, back to that courtyard, where we'll have a center drain that will take it to the southern parcel. So that, that, basically that southern parcel, its entire purpose will be for stormwater management. So the area available for us to manage the stormwater is far exceeds what we would need to meet. So we'll be able to do a good job of managing those flows, even to reduce the impacts that the residents are currently seeing. And not to Josh's benefit, and no disrespect to our friends at DEQ, but the DEQ Regional Office is across the street. So from an enforcement standpoint, from eyes-on, it really could not be a worst-case for contractors to make sure they're watching their Ps and Qs and doing what they need to, to meet the local ordinances, as well as state ordinances. So from a stormwater management standpoint, obviously, we have to go through all the review processes at the county, reducing stormwater from both the quantity and quality standpoint, making improvements. So we'll be adhering to those, all to the betterment of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Wampler. Any questions for the applicant at this time?
No.
I have none. Troy?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one.
I'm sorry.
Question for Bobby.
Hello, has a question.
That's one. Fencing, do you all have fencing?
Yes, the fencing will basically be contained with buildings.
Is that, is that the orange line?
It is.
On these?
Yes.
So at this time, if there are no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. This evening, we will take a 10-minute recess for the public hearing. In order to allow anyone to call in, you can send your public comments in, and they can be submitted by email to planning@roanokecountyvirginia.gov or by phone at 540-776-7278. That's 540-776-7278. So I'm going to, we have opened the public hearing. We will take a 10-minute recess to get any comments. Then we will come back together and we will conclude with the public hearing. So at this time, we'll take a 10-minute recess. Okay, at this time, we're going to continue with the public hearing. First of all, I'll ask staff, did we have any comments during the public comment time?
We did not receive any emails or any phone calls through the ten-minute recess period.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. I want to, I do want to read a few housekeeping rules. This is just a reminder that the Planning Commission is an advisory board to the Board of Supervisors to provide advice and recommendations to the board on many issues pertaining to land use policies. Each speaker will be given three minutes to comment, whether speaking as an individual or as a representative. All comments must be directed to the Planning Commission. Speakers are requested to leave any written statements that they wish to and/or comments with the Secretary of the Planning Commissions. So with that, we'll go into citizen comments. So do we have anyone wishing to speak this evening? I don't think I had any paper. I know we did have someone that was here that had some questions, said, "Your questions have been answered. Do you wish to speak in any capacity? I'd be happy to hear you." You're okay? Okay. All right. So is there anyone else here that wishes to speak before I close the public hearing? Okay, if not, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, public comments at this So at this point, does anyone on the commission have any questions for the applicant or for Troy, any questions? Troy?
No, just some general comments. My, you know, to me, it's, it checks the boxes and we're about ready to make a, and it's my district, so I'm ready to make a motion, but the only thing I keep coming back to is we have a precedent set, one, what, two exits up Interstate 81 on a corridor just like ours, and we made a local developer, had quite a bit of cost to his project, and it looks like this one, while they've done a very good job and checked all the boxes, doesn't have to do as much as a previous applicant did. And for me, it doesn't, something just doesn't seem right, that we, I think we do have a rendering here, at least I have one in the packet I got from the applicant, and, you know, I would think that, that rendering needs to be a part of any kind of motion as well as some kind of planning strip along the main thoroughfare just so we're acting in accordance with a previous application. That's where I see it, but, I mean, I would like to know how the other representatives feel, especially you, Wayne. I believe you were on the commission when the plantation went through, and I believe it was your district, and trying to figure out a little bit more about how this is different from that in some way, or is it not?
I think there is a difference. I think some of the problems that we had there was setback in the rendering that he, and staff, you'd have to refresh my memory if I'm wrong here, but I think some of the renderings that he had would just simply not fit on the property. And we have a much different, different situation, different property situation, different rendering, different building. And I think we had to make, ask him to make some changes, not only that, but as we previously discussed concerning, keeping in mind that we're going to have the walk out front. I think, I think there was some problems with, if I remember correctly, we needed to make sure that the Water Authority had the proper easements. And so I think, I think, Troy, we're asking for, if this is passed, we're asking for four different things for them to adhere to.
Mm-hmm.
The site, the landscaping, the lighting, and the signage. And I, I just think that there is some differences between this one and the other one because of the plan that was brought forth and the lot, the amount of land that was there to do the project to the size that he wants to do it.
Okay, because the motions do look the same, proposed, except for the idea of a planning strip along the right-of-way, a dumpster enclosure that matches, and the building developed in accordance with renderings. Those are the only differences I can see between the application in seventeen and the one today.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do you think there are a couple, that raises a good question. Are you all going to have a dumpster location? So they're not having a dumpster location at this facility.
That's fine. That's good.
All right. So the other issue with, if you remember the Plantation Road project, they had parking adjacent to the right-of-way on both Plantation and High Tech. And so there's a requirement in our ordinance that if you have park, if you have a street and you have parking that fronts that street, you have to provide a street, a street buffer with trees. So they incorporated that into their concept plan because it's required, right?
Okay.
Here, they don't have parking that fronts any, you know, they have a building between the, you know, the parking sits between the two buildings. So there's not direct parking in front of or adjacent to 460. That's the reason why the Plantation Road project needed to have the landscape, because it was a requirement of our ordinance, not so much because we were making them do so. I think the other issue dealt with, if you remember, behind the Plantation Road storage facility, they had these large parking spaces for recreational vehicles and, or, yeah, recreational vehicles or anything else they wanted to park there. And so the adjacent lot, they planted a buffer along that because you could see it from Plantation Road, right? Here, you're not going to see any of that because of the buildings and the landscaping behind it.
Okay.
So we, again, now, if you want to have them put a row of street trees along the frontage of 460, that's up to you all if you want to make that requirement. But that's not required of our ordinance. That would be above and beyond what's required in our ordinance.
Any other comments, Troy? I think, I think we have a different, a different concept plan and a different topography, different, it's just a different situation. So I don't, I don't think that we required anything of the other developer that, that we didn't have to. And I think if we had the same situation here, we would do the same thing.
And again, if you want to have a condition about that it shall be developed in conformance with the rendering provided, I'm sure Bobby--
No, that's really the only thing, which is the rendering we have, what is the plan built out by the, by the applicant?
Yeah, they're fine with that. So if that's, again, our thing would be, maybe we would have the engineer put a date on it so we could refer to it, or maybe a title to it, and then we'll just refer to that as an additional condition if that's what you want to add.
I would, yeah. I think that would make it close to apples to apples.
So Troy, what you're saying is, is condition number one doesn't cover what you're asking? The site shall be developed in general conformance with the concept plan titled "Concept Plan Prepared by Engineering Concepts"?
If you include it with the concept plan, then I think number one would cover it then, yeah.
Okay. It says, "Prepared by Engineering Concepts, dated May 26, 2021."
Yeah, who prepared the rendering? Was that?
Yeah, if Engineering Concepts could include that as part of the package with that date, then I think it would cover it, yes.
Okay.
I think it's prepared by somebody else.
The renderings?
Yes.
Was prepared by someone else?
Yes.
So you could include that renderings, that rendering in your--
It was done by a security store.
Okay.
Bobby can't put his stamp on it.
Put a G and H on it.
He said he could put a G and H on it.
Yeah, I've probably done it a few times I wasn't supposed to.
Hey, you're at a public hearing, sir.
I know, I know, I know. You don't have to tell me that all the time.
Yeah. Any other, any other questions, concerns?
No, sir.
From me? The only other one here? No, it sounds good to me. Looks like any impact it'd have on the residential area, neighborhood conservation will be mitigated by topography and the design. Sounds like they put a lot of thought into stormwater management. So all that, the only other concern I'd have was traffic impact, but it sounds like that'll be touched on in the plan review stage, so.
Well, I did think it was interesting in, on page seven of our, of our packet, it said, it gave a list of high generating, high-traffic generating land uses and many warehouses, not one of them. So any other comments or questions for staff or the applicant? If not, is someone ready to make a motion?
Mr. Bauer, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we, move that we recommend approval of this rezoning request as it is requested, and further find that the proposed special use permit, one meets the requirements, and move therefore that we approve this-- the requirements, and move therefore that we approve this position to span a use permit with the following conditions. One, the site plan shall be developed in general conformance with the concept plan titled "Concept Plan Prepared by Engineering Concepts" on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, subject any changes required the site plan review process. Two, landscaping on the site shall be installed in general conformance to the concept plan titled "Concept Plan Prepared by Engineering Concepts" dated May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, subject any changes required during the site plan review process. Three, lighting on the site shall be limited to lighting fixtures on the proposed buildings, and there shall be no freestanding light poles on-site. Four, freestanding signage shall be limited to one freestanding sign approximately twelve feet in height and twen, ten feet in width, and shall be in conformance with the concept drawings provided by blink signs dated April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. And I guess, I don't know if we need to put a number five, that the rendering will be included in that, or we're just suffice with one as it is.
Since it's by somebody else, we probably would add it, that the site or the building shall be constructed in conformance with the architectural rendering, and then we'll get the "prepared by" and date after we get that from Mr. Wompler.
You in agreement with that? Okay, you're gonna add that as the fifth one then to the motion?
If it's okay with Mr. Henderson.
Is that okay, Mr. Henderson? He's gonna add that to the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bauer.
Okay, we have a motion before us, is there any discussion on the motion? I have none.
No, sir.
Troy?
No, sir.
Okay, then let's call for a vote.
Mr. McMurray?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bauer?
Yes. Okay, it will be passed on to the Board of Supervisors with a favorable vote, keeping in mind that we do, we are an advisory board to the Board of Supervisors, and there will be a public hearing with the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Thompson?
June twenty-second.
June twenty-second, okay? All right, thank you very much. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to item H, which is citizen comments. Is there any citizen here that wishes to make any comments at all about anything? If not, I will move on to comments by the planning commissioners and planning staff. Troy, any comments?
No, sir.
No, sir.
I, I would like to say, I wanna turn my attention to Ms. Susan. I just wanna say it's truly been a pleasure working with you over the past few years on the commission. You have served this commission and the County of Roona with diligence and with grace, and we appreciate that, and we want to thank you very much for all you have accomplished, and it is my prayer that God will bless you with good health and watch over you in whatever your future endeavors are. So thank you very much for all you have done for us, okay?
Amen. When's she leaving?
The last day of this month, is what I understand.
Oh, gosh, okay, thank you for letting me know.
All right, so you'll have to come see her, okay?
Yes, I will.
All right, any other comments from commissioners?
No, sir.
Okay, staff?
It's been my honor and privilege to be with you all.
Thank you, yeah, same here. Any other comments?
The only other thing is you don't have a work session in, in June, so your next meeting will be July sixth, and that'll be the public hearing on the zoning warrants amendments, so other than that, that's it.
Okay, we're moving on to item J, final orders.
Since we haven't had a public hearing since February, it's one that states back to then, you all held a public hearing on R.P. Frayland Inc.'s request to rezone property from I-1 to R-1 for a hundred-and-twenty-four lot subdivision. You all recommended approval at your February second meeting, and the Board approved it at its February twenty-third meeting. That's the only final order that we have.
Okay, and I, I do wanna go back and say thank you to Brian for being here this evening, even though we didn't need your comments, but thank you for, for your willingness to be here, so. Any other comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item K, which is adjournment, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Troy.